I would like to call the council meeting to order. Everybody stand for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk take the roll.
Mayor O'Connor.
Here.
Morissette.
Here.
Alms.
Here.
DeZio.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Atkins Hoggitt.
Here.
Hall.
Here.
All right, before we get started, we've got a number of presentations and quite a few things on the agenda here tonight. First of all, though, I do want to, once again, publicly congratulate the council members Hall and Morissette for their victories in the last election. Also, I presume Councilmember Brooke is listening in, or soon-to-be Councilmember Brooke, and congratulations to Sarah as well. And I also want to recognize and acknowledge that this is Sarah Atkins Hoggitt's last meeting with us, and I want to say, we'll get into this more later, but I do want to say it has been a pleasure working with you, Sarah, and I wish that we had had more time to work together because there were another a number of things that you and I really wanted to get to work on together, and they will continue, and hopefully you will be a party to some of those initiatives as we go forward.
Thank you.
All right, so first presentation, Professional Municipal Clerks Week proclamation.
Okay. Whereas, oh wait, let's see. Professional Municipal Clerks Week proclamation, May 2nd through May 8th, 2021. Whereas, the time-honored role that professional municipal clerks play in local government and election administration is critical to the endurance and prosperity of our state. And whereas, our state's 1,854 professional municipal clerks strive to always be impartial in handling their official duties, guided by the overarching goal of providing equal treatment to all Wisconsinites regardless of political affiliation. And whereas, among numerous vital responsibilities, professional municipal clerks serve as the official record keepers of their respective municipalities and are tasked with ensuring transparency and communication between the governing bodies they represent and the folks they serve. And whereas, professional municipal clerks provide essential support in the administration of elections, often preparing ballots, training election officials, and tabulating and certifying election results. And whereas, even in the face of uncertainty and unprecedented challenges to election administration, especially over the past year to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, our professional municipal clerks never fail to display courage, flexibility, resilience, and dedication to the doctrine of free and fair elections. And whereas, this week, the state of Wisconsin joins all Wisconsinites in appreciating and thanking our professional municipal clerks for the important work they do. Now therefore, I, Mayor of the City of Hudson, do hereby recognize the week of May 2nd through May 8th, 2021, as Professional Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend appreciation to our municipal clerk Becky Egan and our deputy municipal clerk Karen Ducko, and to all municipal clerks for their vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent, proclaim this 12th day of April, 2021, on behalf of Mayor Rich O'Connor, City of Hudson.
Thank you, Erin.
Yep.
Becky, thank you for your hard work. It's a great acknowledgement of the things that you do for us. It's a city. It's always underappreciated and never very visible. So once again, congratulations and thank you for all the work you've done for us.
Thank you.
Arbor Day proclamation.
All right. Whereas, 2021 marks the 149th anniversary of Arbor Day in the United States and the 138th year of celebration by Wisconsin communities. And whereas, trees are among Hudson's most beautiful natural resources and bestow fine opportunities for aesthetic appreciation and recreation, as well as improvements for our homes in public lands that are indispensable to our ecology as providers of wildlife habitat, erosion control, air filters, and noise inhibitors. And whereas, Hudson has been named a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation in recognition of the outstanding efforts by the city and its residents to provide a legal basis, financial investment, and community participation to support an ongoing program to plant, nurture, and routinely maintain and restore their canopy of trees. And whereas, the demands on our environment and our environmental resource necessitate an increased awareness of ecological values as well as individual commitment to the study and appreciation of trees and their maintenance. Now therefore I, oh, I get to do this one. Now therefore I, City Administrator Erin Reeves, do hereby proclaim Saturday, May 1st, 2021, as Arbor Day in the City of Hudson, and call upon all citizens to participate in the Arbor Day celebration and continue to support and protect our trees and woodlands. I never got to declare one before. That was my first one. I appreciate that. I think that was Maraz, so thank you, Mike.
Excellent. Well, your first and last probably, Erin.
I would guess so, probably unfortunately, but at least I got to do one. I appreciate that.
That's exactly, that's good. It's a good thing. Happy for that. Public Works Facilities Assessment Presentation by Cedar Corporations.
All right, so good evening, council. Mike Maraz, Director of Public Works, and Erin got that last one because I thought the mayor was going to be on vacation, but he stepped in, so welcome, mayor. So the public--
It's fitting, Mike, because in, for anybody that doesn't know, the reason I said "and last" is because Erin is leaving us for the, for the public that may not have understood that last comment from me. So it was fitting anyway, Mike, so thank you for that.
There you go. So in front of you, Public Works Facility Assessment by Cedar Corp. We have two representatives from Cedar Corp., Chris Dressler and Corey Schneider are here tonight, and this is a continuation of a project that's been ongoing since, last spring is when we started it. The summer months, Cedar Corp. came out and interviewed and talked with the staff and came out and looked at the sites, and they put together a facility assessment report for the Public Works Facility. As many of you know, you know, the facilities that we're in right now were built in the 1950s, and you know, as the city has continued to grow, we are just kind of busting at the seams, and this is kind of the planting of the seed as far as, you know, what the future looks like and kind of lay out a timeline that we can follow. Obviously, this is going to be an overnight deal. It's going to take a lot of, lot of time, a lot of effort, but you know, just kind of lay out the steps for the future. So with that, I'll turn it over to Chris and Corey and take it from there. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. My name's Chris Dressler with Cedar Corporation, and I do have a little slideshow presentation if we could share a screen with you guys.
Go ahead and give it a try now.
All right, is everybody able to see that?
Yep.
All right. So first and foremost, I want to thank the City of Hudson for giving us the opportunity to work with your staff and work on this study for you guys. It's been a pleasure working with everybody at the Public Works. So kind of getting into it, just to kind of give the background of the city, excuse me, we've got, the city encompasses about 7.65 square miles, and as of January 19th, it was estimated, January 2019, it was estimated to be 14,094 population. I'm pretty sure you guys are well over that now, probably closer to that 14,500. And then the Streets Department takes care of the maintenance of the city streets and plowing and things of that sort. And that, and you know, with 90 miles of city streets that you guys have, that takes up a lot of, a lot of equipment and a lot of, a lot of hours to keep those maintained and cleared off. And then also the Parks Department, you know, has about 300, a little over 300 acres of public parks they maintain, so that takes quite a bit of equipment and hours as well to maintain those. And then, as part of the study, we looked at the equipment of the Streets Department having about 15 one-ton pickups, you know, 15 larger equipment, over 13,000 pieces of equipment, and then, as well as additional mowers and trailers and miscellaneous equipment that they need to house in this facility. So now I want to kind of give you the objective of our study. Mike kind of touched on it. We looked at determining the suitability of the existing Public Works facilities, and in order to do that, we had to determine the proper size of a modern Public Works facility and what worked for the option, or the operations of the City of Hudson's Public Works Department. Excuse me. And then, you know, as we kind of went through that, we evaluated options for, you know, new facility and modernized facility, and reviewed potential sites for the new Public Works facility. And in order to kind of get to that point, basically, we had to go through and like Mike mentioned, we sat down with Mike and Kevin and their other staff and talked about what the, what the department needs are, what the space needs are, you know, depending on the pieces of equipment and movements and things like that. So back in September, we looked at all of that. And then also in September, we looked through the condition of the existing facilities, as well as, you know, the space that the existing facilities and sites provided. And then, after we kind of did that, we provided the presentation to the Public Works Committee where we got some feedback from those committee members, and we looked back at, you know, some different things and came up with design scenarios and evaluated what the next steps would be for this project. And then, which brings us today, you know, presenting to you folks, you know, our findings and everything.
Yes, this is, I just want to interrupt here one second. As we were going through that and we made our final presentation to the committee in October, one of the things we were decided to take a look at is, what is the cost of not doing the facility, or how could it benefit the City of Hudson? So we have some interesting facts a little bit later in our presentation here this evening for you that'll, that'll reflect those components, and some of that included the analysis of the property cost or property value, and then some employee facts. So we'll get to that in a moment.
Thank you, Corey. So kind of, as we kind of went through the existing facility analysis, we looked at a few different sites, one being the site of 1522 Street, which is the main public workshop, as well as their salt storage facility there. So this site is about, you know, with, with the, what the Public Works is utilizing, it's about 2.3 acre site. There's some other portions of the site that are more for the boat landing and things like that, down at the bottom of the hill there. But looking at this site, you know, with the constraints of the slopes, the railway, you know, the highway going through there, there really isn't enough space for some of this larger equipment to maneuver on the site and get in out in a safe and effective or efficient manner, I should say. And also with this site, it provides no opportunity for expansion of the facilities or the site itself. Just with the steep slopes and you got the lake and the railway, railroad and the highway there, it really boxed in that site. Along with this site, there is a blind corner at the top of the hill, you know, so as somebody's coming up, up the hill and somebody's coming out of the site to go down the hill, you know, they may not see each other, take the corner too tight, and you got some issues there. And then also, there really isn't any stormwater management or treatment, I should say, on this site. Everything just kind of flows off, off the site and into the, the public street waves and waterway there. As well as, we don't really have any spill containment there as either, you know, when you're talking the quantity of salt storage and the, and the different things that, you know, with the fuel, fuel station there and everything, if there was, if there was a bad spill, there really wouldn't be much opportunity to contain that, you know, to avoid it going off-site.
You know, Chris, when we talk about this site, it's a lot of bad things that we're talking about here, but honestly, this is a great site for potential development. This property may have higher and better uses for private development or, or other development that may be desired in the city. The building, however, good building, you know, it's holding up well, needs a little maintenance. It's sized, you know, at a decent size. When this building was built, however, equipment gets larger and we have more equipment, so the building doesn't lend itself well to expansion or renovation, just due to being precast, masonry, limited ceiling heights. As you can see in the photos here, there's very low headroom in one of the mezzanines that were created for additional storage. So not the, not the most suitable building for expansion, not the most desirable site for expansion. So we have a lot of things going on that make this not a good solution for the city long term. It's working, but perhaps not the best solution long term. So, sorry to interrupt there, Chris. Corey, what, what do you, what do you consider long term?
So when we look long term, usually we try to shoot for a one to two is years the immediate, and then a two to five is short term, five to 10 would be moderate, and then 10 to 20 would be long term. Now, long-term planning and long-term goals for the city should be looking at 30 to 50 years. A lot of times with materials and products that we're utilizing in new construction, that's when you start seeing that obsolescence start to appear in products and materials. So we try to shoot for that 30 to 50 years with newer renovations. Does that answer your question?
Well, I guess. I'm just wondering where all this fits in with our, with our wastewater treatment study.
Sure. That's, that's a, that's a good thing to, to look at. And we have a lot of experience looking at wastewater, water, and other utility projects and how they tie in with streets and parks and other departments. So we could certainly talk a little bit about, like, about that if you would like.
All right.
Chris, why don't we go to that next slide there? So I'll just go through this here.
Yeah, so again, this, this site is the 1425 Second Street, so that's, that's on the opposite side of the highway. And this site is currently being utilized as kind of off-season storage or miscellaneous storage, where they just don't have the room at the, at the current, or at the main site to, to house all the equipment. And, and we'll get into some other efficiencies down the line here, you know, where, where some of that benefit can, can really, that the city will be able to realize a lot of, a lot of this benefit. But basically, this, this site, again, you know, looking at it for the Public Works Department, really doesn't provide adequate space or expansion opportunity for the, for the future of the Public Works, as well as it's, it's more of in a residential area on this side of the highway where you can get some noise pollution and everything. And kind of the same situation for stormwater treatment and spill containment. And then these, these buildings are quite, quite older, you know, they're, they're buildings that weren't really made for longevity, you know, with a, with a pre-engineered metal building. We typically see 20 to 30 years, and, you know, we're estimating that it, that it was built in, you know, the 60s, 70s. So that, that's well beyond its, its expected lifespan, and you're starting to see some of the wear and tear on the building itself. And just the, you know, the installations for the building envelope just are not, not what you would expect to see in today's construction. Excuse me. And then also, there is the, a cold storage building, that's a little bit newer construction, that's a post-frame wood construction. Again, that, that's, it's a, it's a good for a cold storage building, but it doesn't really impact the, the future expansion or the, or the uses that, that the Public Works is, is really going to need here in the near future, right, immediate to end of the future, I should say. So the third site that we looked at was the 2001 Ward Avenue, which is the current site of the Parks, the Parks Department and the storage of their equipment there. And for, for the Parks Department's use, this is a very good site. Location's very good. The space is good for them. It does have some limitations to expansion, but looking at the, the amount of space that the, that the Parks Department has in this building, they would be able to grow into this building, you know, down the line here quite a ways. So, so that this, this facility and, and site works very well for the Parks Department, centrally located in the, in the city and access to all the parks in the area. There are some minor deficiencies, accessibility deficiencies in the, in the shower and, and some ventilation in the shop, and there's no backup generator. But for, for a Parks Department, it's probably not overly critical for, for them to have an emergency generator.
Hey, Chris, this is Mike with the city. Interrupt you for one second. So we got a pretty lengthy agenda tonight, so if you could kind of maybe wrap it up here within the next five minutes, fly through the rest of your slides, and then maybe answer some questions, that'd be fantastic.
Yeah, I'll push this one then.
Chris, I can, I'm going to take a couple of these here for it. So we just wanted to point out some of the, the elements that we would be looking at for a new, modern Public Works Facility. So we're focused on staffing, making spaces for the staff, locker rooms, proper office spaces, making sure we have the security and whatnot. We're also looking at how the space functions. So we're going to be looking at how the equipment is housed, how it's maintained, and how that, those spaces interact with employees, and then so forth with the site as well. A lot more equipment, we're trying to get that equipment inside, so the storage that's going to be outside is going to be for stockpiles. Stormwater is becoming a much more prevalent thing in all of our designs and being sustainable with the environment. So we're looking at a lot of those components as we, we choose and look at sites. So the biggest thing that we, we would look at for a modern highway facility, our Public Works Facility, is having adequate storage, having adequate flow around through the site. Chris, we can go to that next slide there. So as we looked at your facility, we, we broke it up into several areas which are bulleted here in our presentation this evening. They sub totaled to 61,000 in the primary building, and then we have a salt storage facility, which is approximately 11,000 square feet. When we look at this here, essentially moving into a 72,000 square foot building, and I'll, I'll show you a comparison a little bit later here, but you're essentially in about 21,000 square feet right now without the salt storage. So a building of this size is going to require about eight acres, so. Next one, Chris. So this is where I talked about that exciting news, what we started looking back at in October. So with the efficiencies, by combining everybody and all the resources into a single building, or primary building, rather, we're going to have reduced travel and operations. We did some quick calcs with the city's help, and just looking at some hours and rates, this could save the city nearly $50,000 per year. And then, you know, as, as everyone's aware, modern facilities are going to have ample room, have less backing up maneuvering, so increased safety, proper storage sizes for equipment. So again, less injuries, less equipment damage, less building damage, which is hard to put a price tag on, but we know it's, it is a, a cost that can be incurred to the city or your insurance provider. Increased efficiencies and opportunities. So equipment being modern and new equipment, you know, as we look through the, the fleet of vehicles and equipment the city has, this equipment needs to be stored inside. So having this interior and stored properly, and having the adequate spaces in a new facility is going to increase the equipment life and use, proper maintenance base and things of that nature. So, next slide. Our findings are that the existing 23,000 square feet versus the necessary 61,000 square feet is not even close to what is necessary. And none of the existing sites are suitable for a new facility, so we were looking at a, a new site with a new building for the optimum solution. We're looking at a 75-year life expectancy for a facility like this. So it's the most cost-effective solution long term for the city. So, next slide. Just the overall map of the city here, and Chris, if you can just point out where our new site is located?
Right here on Hamley Road.
We did create a conceptual drawing that shows how we would actually fit onto the site. So as you can see, it does take up quite a bit of space, but this would be the ultimate build-out for a new Public Works Facility for the city. So, and then here's just another blow-up of how the, the offices and different spaces would function within that facility. So combining everything from multiple facilities into one. Just a 3D graphic showing the, kind of the size and scale of the project. And the exciting part, right? Budget, and be happy to answer any questions on any of this as we go. I'm just trying to keep up your schedule here. I know you're busy. So we ran some costs based on the RS Means, which is a software we use for cost estimates, a nationally recognized software. We looked at the facility, we looked at the salt shed, and recognizing that there are a lot of unknowns, we have a contingency factor in there. We then established soft cost permits, fees, whatnot, and then a furnishings allowance, so furniture, equipment, things like that, and then an estimated land acquisition cost to come up to a, if we were to use a round number, of $12 million for this project. So, next slide. So this process, again, a significant investment for the city, but the, a process like this, while it can go much quicker, typically takes around three to four years to complete. So here's kind of the breakdown, what we would be looking at if we were to proceed So here's kind of the breakdown, what we would be looking at if we were to proceed with this project in twenty twenty one. Uh, there's a lot of work that would be occurring before we get to that twenty twenty five, twenty twenty four, twenty five uh construction timeframe, so next. So the, just to kind of summarize here, um the new facility will be about sixty one thousand, nearly sixty two thousand square feet. Uh, it is a significant increase from where you're at right now, but this gets all the equipment under roof uh and provides adequate clearance. Uh, you know, I would be happy to join the council in a tour of the public works facilities, so you could see um, you know, that the space that the equipment is in, I think you may be surprised, um it is it is quite tight in all the facilities. And then uh we evaluated options, uh looked at everything that was available uh that we were aware of. And our solution is that a a new facility on a new site is the best solution for the city at this time. And then we looked at what sites are available, the only known site at this time is out on Cratley, so um that's what we focused on, so. I kind of went through the next steps and and the schedule for that very quickly, so I'd be happy to answer any questions on that. Uh, and then I can also sort of back to the mayor's question on the uh how this might interact or what this could look like with a wastewater or other utility project. So be happy to answer any questions? Anybody?
I have a quick question, this is Bill, I'm uh District Two. What size is that parcel of land? Did I miss that? I'm sorry.
Chris, I believe that was seven acres on that site, wasn't it?
Yeah, it's about seven point three or seven point four.
And you had talked about the need being eightish?
Yeah, approximately.
Correct. So we usually, we take factors from the building square footage and look how the building would sit on the site and then begin to determine how many acres. So it's usually, you know, a net size of building, we would see anywhere from six to eight. Uh, I have seen project or buildings that size go on approximately five acres.
Gotcha, thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody? All right, well, I wanna thank you guys for uh for the presentation. Uh, it's a lot of money, I guess, but we need to be looking at doing something here, so. We'll be having a continued conversation about this, so once again, thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Uh, all right, MS four annual report presentation.
Just bringing it up now. All right, so Mike Maraz, Director of Public Works, once again. So uh each year, uh the city has to apply for a general permit for stormwater. And per that permit, I have to come up in front of council and give you a spiel of what we did this last year. So lucky you, you get to sit through this. Uh, I'll make it brief, there's only thirteen slides here, so I'll just kind of go through, you know, what at what is MS four, you know, what we did, so on and so forth. So we were uh established uh MS four community back in twenty fourteen. Uh, what makes us MS four community is our population reached that ten thousand threshold. And as you can see, there's about two hundred forty five throughout the state. To fund the stormwater MS four program, uh the city enacted a stormwater utility back in two thousand twelve, which is an additional charge on the utility bill. Um, every quarter, uh resident and commercial businesses pay into the stormwater utility fund, which used to fund uh staff, we use to do projects, cleanup, maintenance of ponds, education, you know, outreach, so on and so forth. So that's what the stormwater utility is. So we have over four hundred thousand linear feet of storm sewer pipes in the city. Approximately three thousand catch basins, seventy outlets, ten thousand forty manholes and hundred and fifteen stormwater ponds. Um, hundred and ten are public, which the city maintains, five of them are private. So the MS four annual report has several different categories, uh the first one being public education outreach, second one, public involvement, so on and so forth, you can read them there. And what what I do is at the end of the year, I gotta compile data and basically mailings and letters and events and pictures and photos. And I compile compile them all into one report, which I submit to the D N R. And then they review it and basically, you know, if we don't hear from them, we're doing fine. They will do some random audits, so we need to make sure that we're we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's to make sure that we have the backup files necessary when they do come, cuz they will stop by at some point in time just to see how our program is doing and auditing all of our records, so our record keeping's gotta be on point. So that kind of gives the idea of what I have to do every 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 year. Uh, first one, uh public education outreach, um you know, Raina Rivers, we're a part of Raina Rivers Consortium, which is a group of municipalities in the western Wisconsin. Us, River Falls, Menominee, Eau Claire, Eau Claire County. Um, I'm sure I'm missing a couple, but we get together every month. Uh, we meet, we discuss, you know, the MS four program, the D N R, new requirements, new permit requirements. Then we also rely on Raina Rivers to help us with our public engagement, so they run public service ads, they have signage up in baseball diamonds, so. Um, you know, we can, if and when the baseball diamond gets built here, we can advertise there, so it helps basically tick off that that public education portion of our MS four permit. Solicit discharge, you know, it's kind of self-explanatory. We have seventy outfalls, thirty four basically dump right into uh public waters, which would be Lake Maloo or Saint Croix River. And we have to go in and basically inspect all of our outfalls once, if not twice a year. And we have a G I S uh database where there's a form right on the iPad for our staff and they go in, they check, they click on what outfall they're at, they say, do they see a discharge, do they not see a discharge, so on and so forth. If there is a a spill, uh like an automobile accident or a tank or something like that, it's something that, of course, we would need to report to the state, so. That's the next portion. Post-construction stormwater management, so this is our pond maintenance, this is one of our bigger items each year. Uh, obviously, in the pictures, you can see, you know, lower right hand corner is a nice new stormwater facility up in Carmichael Ridge. Uh, lower left hand corner, that's a, that's actually a pond that you see there, which is just south of Saint Pat's Church off of Vine Street, now notice the difference. And that's kind of some of the things that we're running into as a city is some of the ponds that were installed twenty, thirty years ago really haven't been maintained, and now that we're MS four community, we need to go in and start maintaining them, so what do we have to go and do it? Well, a lot of tree removal, uh scrub, you know, scrub brush removal, a lot of dredging. As upper right hand corner, you can see the picture of the a stick pulling dredge material, a lot of sediment over the years. And it's really challenging, obviously, when you go into some of these neighborhoods and they look at it and they think it's a woods, and in fact, it's a stormwater facility, and so we're having to go in and clean clean those up, and obviously, it's a lot of a lot of communication. Um, and then as part of the MS four permit, we also have to inspect these, so every year, we go and inspect all one hundred and fifteen of our ponds. We have it on our G I S database, the staff will click on the pond, they'll, you know, they can take pictures of the inlets, the outlets, the sediment depths, uh so on and so forth, and that all gets reported to the to the state. Construction site pollution control, so this is another part, uh any development over one acre, we are supposed to be keeping a close eye on the uh developer or the person building, constructing a, you know, new building, a bank, so on and so forth, uh we go on onsite, make sure that they have all their erosion control erosion control in place, which they identified on their plans. Um, you know, silt fence, erosion logs, are there any washouts on the streets, inlet protection, so on and so forth. We keep track of all of that as well and submit it to the state. Pollution prevention, pretty simple. Uh, street sweeping was one of our main ways that we try to pull prevent pollution from entering our streams and rivers. Um, as you can see, you know, we kind of start early April and sweep as long as we can into November. Um, last year, we collected four hundred and fifty cubic yards of material. And uh catch basins, we have a vac trailer that we utilize, which basically each catch basin, uh we go and pop off the lid, basically take a big vacuum and suck out all the the leaves, the litter, the sediment, so on and so forth, so that doesn't eventually make its way to our ponds and our our rivers, so two hundred and eleven of those cleaned last year. And then finally, the stormwater quality management, so the goal is basically to reduce discharge of pollutants carrying in the stormwater to waters of the state. So we do that through our ponds, through our street sweeping, through rain gardens and through vacuuming out those those catch basins. So the the permit actually requires us to have twenty percent total suspended solid reduction. So Hudson is actually achieving three times that at fifty nine point seven two percent, so we're actually in a really good place right now as far as our um T S S reduction. Our T P reduction, uh pretty much right on par for what is required, we're just a shade shade above that for Lake Saint Croix nutrient T M D L. Little stricter just because of the National Scenic Riverway, um but we're sitting good there. If for some reason we do start to inch closer to that, you know, percentage, we have to look at alternative ways to maintain our facilities, whether that's trapping litter or, you know, increased s- street sweeping. Um, but for right now, we're we're sitting okay and I don't foresee us um, you know, having to deal with that with at least for the next two, three years. Uh, stormwater facility, our stormwater utility, touched base on this at the beginning. Um, it's kind of gives you just a breakdown of, you know, the R U's and what each R U costs. So twenty twenty revenue, five hundred and sixty five thousand dollars, seven hundred and seven seven dollars. But um, and like I said, that's used to fund our our MS four program. So in twenty twenty one, what we're going to be doing is uh continued maintenance inspections of our ponds. We've identified uh four or five of them right off the bat that would, the actual outlets and inlets are are underneath sediment, you can't even see them, so we're gonna have to dredge out material and remove some trees in order to even get to them. Um, you know, we're gonna utilize our new G I S uh collection data tools. Nick O'Brien, our new G I S tech, has been really hard working at developing these forms for the guys to use out in the field. It's super slick, it's, everything's right on your iPad. You click it, you you download the form, it shoots up to my office, I compile a report, it is slick. Um, it makes reporting a lot easier. And then uh obviously, you know, incorporating a stormwater upgrades, conjunction with the street improvements as we continue to redo streets and find unique education outreach opportunities. And that is all I have for you tonight, so thank you for listening to me. And if you have any questions, obviously, shoot me an email, give me a call, and I'll be happy to answer them, thank you.
Thanks, Mike. All right, uh, public hearing regarding special assessments for Highway thirty five, Second Street Project Sidewalk Replacement. This is a public hearing. It's your opportunity to, uh, if you're watching in, it's your opportunity to make any comment that you would like regarding this particular project. Uh, try to keep uh your comments short, please try not to repeat uh what others might say. So is there anyone that would like to comment on this?
And then just as a reminder, if you're muted, um you can click the reactions button and click raise hand or honestly, do anything, clap a hand, thumbs up, whatever. If we see anything pop up on your on your screen, we'll we'll make sure we unmute you so you can uh provide comment.
Yep. Is there anyone that has a comment? Anyone that would like to make a comment?
There's one here in the uh chambers, Rich.
Okay. Uh, step up to the podium, please, identify yourself.
Uh, Dominic Seawick, um my address on second is nine sixteen. I have two quick comments and a consideration. The first comment is, we have a wall uh on our property. And we had Dean Chamberlain come out, the city engineer, to have a discussion last week. The comment there is, he does a great good great job for the city, so props to him. The second comment is there seems to be a lack of consistency. So for those of us that have a wall on the property, the city has provided a number of options to replace that wall or to get rid of it. Those options include if we fix the wall essentially, we're responsible one hundred percent. Or if we get rid of the wall and re-slope, uh we're responsible for fifty and the city is on the hook for the other fifty. When I say there's a lack of consistency, when you look to the north or the south, there are a number of properties that, based on the slope of your yard, do not meet code and should have a wall. So as somebody who has a wall, I have to either replace it or tear it down and have it re-sloped. But yet, it's my understanding that for those that actually don't meet the current code and do not have a wall, they have no responsibility either way. So that doesn't seem like it's consistent and or fair from a policy perspective. Um, the consideration I would have is because right now, for all of the wall owners, we're essentially have a you know, financial burden, I guess you would say, that the council would uh consider some type of special cost sharing, even if we decide to replace the wall. Also considering that some of those walls along Second Street actually play into the historical architecture that the city has in that area anyways. So that's my two comments and my consideration, thank you.
Thank you, um.
And then actually, Mayor, just to clarify, that'll be on the next public hearing?
Yeah.
But it's okay, we can, we can carry that over to the next one for conversation.
I I get it, I I and I I didn't want to interrupt, but I mean, we are talking about sidewalks right now, the retaining walls are coming up in the next public hearing. Um, so is there anyone else that would like to make a comment? Any other comments?
Oh, sorry, I see no one with their hands raised or anything, oh, I see one, sorry, um uh Brian, could you unmute Julie uh Kneef?
I sent the request.
Okay. Julie, we've sent you the request, we mute if you could.
I'm sorry, I didn't have a, no, no question here.
Okay.
Okay. Sorry, the hand was up.
Any other comments? Any other comments? Any other comments?
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
Second.
Yeah, got a motion, second to close public hearing, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved, public hearing is closed. Discussion possible action on approval of resolution twelve dash twenty one, authorizing special assessments for Highway thirty five, Second Street Sidewalk Replacements.
Thank you, Mayor, um I'll take this one, uh so Dean Chamberlain, city engineer, uh is talking about the uh uh possible action on authorizing special assessments on the sidewalk replacement portion of the Second Street project from the summer. So as we kind of noted, this is separate from the retaining wall uh replacement stuff that we'll be talking about in the next item, so just keep that in mind. Uh, so uh this, uh as a part of the Second Street project, uh staff is proposing to replace the sidewalks on both sides of the street. Um, there's uh multiple reasons for that, that staff feels is beneficial to the city. First of all, it would uh take care of a lot of existing tripping hazards, uh existing areas where the sidewalk does not drain correctly and which means in the summertime, there's puddles all over the place, and in the wintertime, there's ice, so. I've uh tr- traveled out there in the wintertime and summertime, and it's uh in certain places, it's no fun to uh get through that corridor uh as it stands right now. Um, and then also it would allow the uh sidewalks to be on the same lifecycle as the rest of the street, so we wouldn't have to go in later uh at a different time and do sidewalk work uh while the street doesn't need to be, you know, updated at the same time, so that uh allows us to save on economies of scale for for doing that work. Uh, according to our special assessment policy, replacement of sidewalks is fifty percent accessible to the fronting property in residential areas. Um, the estimated special assessment amounts, there's the, in the attached engineer's report, there's details about each property and how that breaks down, how it was calculated. Um, so the uh total estimated assessment amount is about seventy nine thousand dollars, about eleven, twelve hundred of which is administrative costs. Eighty six properties would be assessed and the assessment area goes from Vine Street up to Lake Maloo. Uh, the single highest property assessment amount is about twenty two hundred dollars at the eighteen C building at the corner of Elm and Second. The highest amount to be paid by a single owner over multiple properties is a little over three thousand dollars by Hudson Housing Authority. The average assessment is about nine hundred and seventeen dollars uh uh for the average person on that. Um, so bid prices actually, the these uh costs I just explained are ba- based on the actual bid prices received for the project. Uh, they, the the bid prices are very favorable and they were quite a bit under the engineer's estimate, we had a su- we had a estimate of about ninety five thousand dollars of assessments uh prior to the bids coming in. Um, so that average assessment amount went from about eleven hundred dollars down to about nine hundred and seventeen dollars, so that's a good sign. Um, according to our special assessment policy and the resolution that was passed uh in in March, the installment period for paying special assessments, uh if it's under five hundred dollars, it's one year, if it's between five hundred and a thousand, it's two years, and between one thousand and twenty five hundred is three years, and nobody is over twenty five hundred, so don't go beyond that, but. Um, so the uh, as as everybody knows, the project bids came in under budget for the non utilities portion of the project. Um, we We intend to use the additional funding to cover any project overruns and/or fund other projects or other portions of the project that we may be discussing in future agenda items. So with that, staff recommends adopting resolution 12-21, adopting special assessments for the replacement of the sidewalks. One thing I will say too, that apart from the seven properties that we'll be talking about next in the retaining wall portion of this, of this project, this would be the only special assessment that would apply to this project. Normally, replacement of curb and gutter would be specially assessed, but because WISDOT is paying for that cost in, in this project, that obviously we're not specially assessing that portion of the project. So that's a, that's a bonus to, to those people out there. So with that, any questions or concerns?
Anybody?
I'll move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Second.
Got a motion, second to suspend the rules, roll call.
More set?
Yes.
Did I miss it?
Yes.
Alms?
Yes.
Dazeel?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Atkins Hoggatt?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Motion's approved, rules are suspended.
Move to adopt, what is it?
Second.
Got a motion, second to adopt 12-21. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion's approved. Public hearing regarding Highway 35, Second Street Project Retaining Wall Replacements. So once again, this is a public hearing, it's your opportunity to talk about this topic. You heard it before, please unmute. Just feel free to hop in because we can't see you necessarily, although there's a feature to raise your hand and somebody's monitoring that. We did already hear a comment on this, are there any other comments? Any other comments? Any other comments?
Move to close.
Second.
Got, we got a motion, a second to close public hearing, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion's approved, public hearing is closed. Discussion, possible action on Highway 35, Second Street Project Retaining Wall Replacements.
All right, thank you, Mayor. So I would just want to, first of all, a couple of things. You all received an email submission to the comments for the retaining wall public hearings from Luke Mathias at 722 Second Street. I just wanted to acknowledge that that was received and, and forwarded on to City Council in regards to comments on this issue. And, and obviously, we, we heard one person also in regards to that, the previous public hearing. So I, at first, I want to just throw out there that staff is not recommending formal action on this tonight just because of some of the things that I'll be discussing with this. So as a part of the Second Street project, retaining walls that are in poor condition are proposed to be replaced from Vine Street to Lake Maloo and that is in accordance with the city's special assessment policy and retaining wall policy that is, has been adopted. So a lot of these retaining walls are in poor shape and are, are, some of them are in poor enough shape that staff and WISDOT are concerned that they may not hold up to construction activities in the street while the project's going on. So retaining walls, just to be honest, are, are tricky. And there's a few tricky aspects to them. First of all, they're expensive and second of all, they're not as straightforward as, as one may think. You know, it's, it's easier to, to say what a sidewalk replacement looks like because it's a slab of concrete and it's four inches thick and you've got gravel underneath it and we're done. But retaining walls, there's so many different kinds and they have to meet various structural requirements based on each, you know, yard and whatever's being held up by the wall. So I just wanted to acknowledge that, that it's a little bit less one size fits all for retaining walls than it is for, for most of the infrastructure that we deal with in, in the city. So in, in regards to how this came to be, staff walked to the corridor, you know, in advance of the project and identified these six retaining walls for, or six retaining walls adjacent to private properties for replacement and one other for tuck pointing, which is adjacent to private property. And two other wall segments that are holding up city property to be replaced because they meet the criteria in the retaining wall policy for doing so. So in the, in the assessment policy, in the retaining wall policy, replacement and maintenance is 100% accessible to a property being held up by the wall. And if the retaining wall is removed and the earth behind degraded and restored, so talking about permanently removing the wall to eliminate future infrastructure and, and safety hazards with the retaining wall, the city has a 50/50 cost share for that. Retaining walls generally, staff's philosophy on retaining walls is that if we can avoid retaining walls, that's best because retaining walls over time, because of their nature, when they degrade, if they end up failing or falling over, it can be significant, a significant safety hazard to somebody who is walking by, driving by or if there's a road being held up by the retaining wall, if, if that wall fails, somebody could fall off a road and, you know. Retaining walls are not, are not desirable infrastructure unless you have to, to use them and in some cases, there, there's no way around it. So staff is attempting to work with the property owners affected by these retaining wall replacements to determine the design parameters of each wall, types of walls desired and everything. We do, I will say that this isn't in the issue sheet, but we do have a structural engineer working with us that I'm meeting with next week to kind of get a independent opinion too on, on some of these walls to, to see if there's some, some, first of all, if he believes that they need to be replaced and secondly, if there's some other alternatives that we haven't, haven't just looked at at this point to see if there's any way we can reduce costs with the wall types and that kind of thing. According to the resolution that we passed last council meeting, the installment period, for most of these walls are going to be in the 5,001 or greater, which is a 10-year installment period. So I, I anticipate that there's going to be a lot of discussion on this tonight and I'm happy to have that discussion tonight. And like I said, we're going to be looking to gather some more information, some more alternative fact finding, so to speak, and hopefully be able to come back with a, with a more concrete, no pun intended, solution or a proposal, I guess, at the next council meeting on May 3rd.
Yeah, so just a, just a quick chime in with Dean. I mean, when we got these numbers, obviously as staff, we, you know, we're, we're, we're very surprised as well. I mean, they're, they're very expensive numbers and, and we recognize that anything even close to these sort of assessments would be a very high burden on a property and it's something that, you know, I highly doubt that any property owner would be prepared for in any situation. And so with that, staff is trying to take a look at, you know, just a whole range of options that we can do with this situation. We want to take a look at, you know, even going back historically about when these walls were installed, who installed them, what's the purpose of the, what's the purpose of the retaining walls? You know, what is the public benefit versus private benefit? I mean, there's a, there's a whole lot of issues that are involved with this that, as Dean was saying, are not as clear as a sidewalk. There's, there's really, it's a much, unfortunately, more complicated issue and really unfortunately, a much more expensive issue. And I think it's something that we as staff want to be able to try to work through a lot of these things first. We wanted the council to obviously be aware of it, we wanted the property owners to be aware of it. But at the same time, we also want to stress that this isn't the final that we're throwing out here tonight to everyone. That, you know, we understand the concern that was brought up in the public hearing by the one property owner that I think is, you know, definitely is a valid concern to, to, to look at and it is something that we'll, we'll be reviewing with all of it. And I think it's like what Dean said, we want to come back with something that's feasible. You know, as a city, you know, we want to make sure that, that we're being, we're, we're being held responsible for what we should be responsible for, for things that aid our infrastructure as a whole. And, you know, at the same time, taking a look at, you know, what is the private benefit on it as well? But I think there's just enough involved here that, that as staff, we want to take more time to be able to get through it, look at all these different things and then, you know, hopefully come back with some options that are more feasible and, and realistic for everyone involved. I, I think that's, that's only fair to, to the, the property owners that are dealing with this situation that I'm sure were obviously stunned when they, when they received this letter. We, we want to make sure that we're, you know, doing everything we can to come up with something that we think is as equitable as possible in a, honestly, a fairly unique situation in the city. So, so that's where that's at, just to, just so you're, you're aware a, a little bit more of it before, you know, we start the discussion.
Aaron and Dean, this is Randy, District 1. How much are you looking at as far as a total price tag and you're talking about seven walls, correct?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm just looking to see if I can.
I mean, we're talking, if you, if you look, you know, this, at the options that are out there, I mean, for the first property, the, I, I think the lowest cost option that we have right now is, you know, about $45,000. For the second property, the, the lowest price options, about $62,000. For the third property, it's $40,000-ish. Or no, maybe a little less than that, $15,000 for another one. You know, $47,000. These are really big numbers.
My thought is.
I don't know Dean what the total is, but I mean, they're.
Yeah, so it's a little bit dependent on the, on the, you know, types of walls that are actually constructed and stuff. But assuming the cheapest wall type for the situation, for the six wall replacements, fronting private properties, the total is about $226,000 for over six properties.
My thought, my thought, excuse me, Dean.
Yep.
I, I don't want to see this, had no fault of their own, did these property owners go down this road. It's, it's the DOT, it's us as a city and I want to, I would like to see us make it exempt from these taxpayers paying this wall cost. And as you're continuing on deciding what works best for these seven owners, you decide whether you replace or, or discontinue the walls. But I will not support putting in this, I'm not going to vote in favor of this assessment for this wall. I think these seven owners are in a unique situation and we should exempt them from being charged anything.
Yeah, like I said, we, when we saw these numbers, that was our first reaction was, wow. I mean, this is something that as a property owner, you can't be ready for. So I think Randy, as we look at this, we are looking at, okay, so what, how, how do we make this work? You know, we, we may have a policy and, you know, policies are great when you implement them. But I'm sure when the council adopted the retaining wall policy, not one of us, including staff, at that time had any idea that we were looking at a potential one property assessment of $60,000 for our policy. That was not something that the council or staff, because we just weren't that far along yet, were aware of when that policy was put into place. So I think Randy, you're very correct that regardless of what our policy says, we need to now reevaluate in the face of the real world numbers and take a look at what we really can do for our property owners in that situation. So we will be doing that and like I said, we're, our goal is to bring something back that we think is a lot more acceptable for the council and the property owners.
Thanks.
I'd like to comment too, though, I, I totally agree Randy, that, that is, it's just way too much. I think, I mean, this was at Public Works and we did talk about the size that we thought maybe it might be, but never had any idea that people would be facing that much money. I, I just do caution though, because Second Street is not the only area that we have a lot of retaining walls up against sidewalks that are, you know, supporting private land. Like First Street has a ton of them as well and there's retaining walls up on the hill. We, we live in, you know, on a place that has hills everywhere, so there's a lot of retaining walls. So where do you draw the line? And, you know, it's, it's, it's a slippery slope. I wanted to point out to maybe some property owners and to Dean too, I just happen to live across the street from a retaining wall that had been removed probably about 15 years ago. And it was concrete, it was bowing forward and I know the property owners paid for the removal of that themselves, even though it was technically on city property. And if people would want to look at that property, it's I think at 926 First Street, but they did a beautiful job at removing that and still having a yard that's flat on the top and just created landscaping with boulders and such so that they got away from the fact that they had a wall and, but still had a flat yard. So, but something to consider that we have so many retaining walls and it's not just Second Street. So it would be a mighty big budget for the city to take on all of them.
Yep, and like I said, that, that definitely something will come into play is that if we update a policy, we want to recognize that it does have an effect beyond this project. So we want to make sure that we are, we will look at that potential impact.
All right, thanks. Thank you, Dean. All right, so no action on that, we'll move on. Consent agenda, this is an opportunity, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Comments and suggestions from citizens present, this is an opportunity for anybody that's, that is listening in, that has zoomed in, to comment on issues that the city confronts. Please, once again, keep your comments short, please try not to repeat what other people have said and this is your opportunity to, to comment. So again, unmute and just chime right on in because I can't see you if you're raising your hand, although there is obviously the, the raise your hand function on Zoom that other people are monitoring. So are there any comments?
Rich, we have one.
Brian, can you, oh, sorry, go ahead Randy.
We have one at the podium, Rich.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Addison Filiatro, I live at 213 River Street and I just wanted to make a comment thanking Sarah Atkins for her years of service in District 5. This past year has been especially difficult to serve as an elected official and I've been happy to have Sarah as my rep. She has asked critical thinking questions about difficult topics and has been thoughtful in her decision, decisions. Serving in this capacity is typically thankless, but we are so thankful that you stepped up during a difficult time and wish you nothing but the best.
Thank you very much, Addison.
Thank you. Are there any other comments?
Rebecca Hagel is, I believe, unmuted and she'd like to comment.
Okay.
Yes, my name is Rebecca Hagel, I live on 602 Third Street in Hudson. I'd also just like to thank Sarah Atkins as well. I'm proud to have had her as my alderman. I also have three comments. Going forward, I'd like to see the council discuss the curbside parking. I think that is a great benefit to the businesses and it is also a great benefit to the residents. It's the residents of the city who are using that service and I think that that is something that should not go away. I'd also like to see the council discuss further the changes that have been made to limiting citizen feedback. There are new councilmen now on this board and I'd like to see them have, have a conversation about those changes. And finally, I would really like to, I've mentioned this before, but I'd really like to see the council put on the agenda that discussing the inequities around the open records request process. Every citizen in this city has a right to records from their elected officials and it should not matter how many zeros are in your bank account to get those records. And that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Brian, can you unmute Kristin Emerson, please?
We also have a podium.
All right, we'll start with Chris Emerson. All right, we'll start with Chris Emerson.
Hi, um, I also wanted to jump in and thank Sarah Atkins. Um, she's, she doesn't represent me, I'm in a different district, but, um, you know, I met Sarah and John through the YMCA, actually, long before I was even remotely involved in local politics. And, um, you know, Sarah, you're just a wonderful person and you've always been just a great person. And I've, I've approached Sarah, um, just because I've known her with questions about city council and stuff, and she's always been very responsive to me, and that's nothing against Randy. It was just because, you know, I approached the person that I knew outside of politics and, you know, she's always been very responsive. So I really appreciate all your work that you've done, um, over the years.
Thank you, Kristin.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, um, all right, whoever is at the podium?
Hey, it's Liz Milanofe, I'm on Third Street in Hudson, and I'm also repeating what the last couple of people have said and thanking Sarah for representing District Five. And Sarah, I know this was, you came into this at a really difficult time and, um, and it's been a pleasure serving with you on the Urban Forestry Board and I, you just, you have the utmost respect and admiration from me um, for representing the people, your constituents, and in a completely selfless way, you are everything that a representative should be. So thank you for what you've done.
Thank you, Liz, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments? Any other comments?
Actually, this is Sarah Brook, can you guys all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, my address is five-oh-seven Fifth Street, and I too want to give a very heartfelt thank you to Sarah. Your service to our community has been unwavering. I have often heard how much our community members appreciate you, your kind soul, your willingness to listen, and your responsiveness. You have been an incredible role model to me and to many others in our community, and you will be an incredibly tough act to follow. Sarah, thank you, and I look forward to seeing your next chapters unfold. You will be missed and remembered forever.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, Sarah. Any other comments? Any other comments? Any other comments? Hearing none, we'll close that portion of the agenda, consent agenda.
Approve the meeting minutes from March fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one, regular council meeting. Approve the claims in the amount of one million, two-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand, forty-three dollars and forty-seven cents. Discussion on possible action on the fence easement agreement between the City of Hudson and Scott Snyder at twenty Bristol Court. Um, the, the discussion on possible action on the fence easement agreement for a hundred Heritage Boulevard, Dennis Detman. Approval of setting public hearing date of May third, twenty-twenty-one for zoning map amendment application from AR Agriculture Residential to B two general commercial and comprehensive plan amendment from neighborhood commercial to general commercial on the eastern half of each property for parcels zero-two-zero, one-zero-eight-four, zero-zero, zero-zero, zero-two-zero, one-zero-eight-three, nine-zero, zero-zero, and parcel zero-two-zero, one-four-zero-four, one-four-zero-zero, Hudson Physicians SC. Approve operator's license listed on the list sheet. Approve the purchase of Stanley Fire and Rescue Landing Craft Boat. Approve the letter engagement with SEH in the amount of eleven thousand, seven-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars for the State Highway Thirty-five Lighting Improvement Construction Services. Approve the quote from Cyclone Fence in the amount of eight thousand, eight-hundred-nine dollars to install the twenty-foot backstop at Burton Park. Approve the police department purchase of two pepper ball guns. Approve moving officers, Massman and Woodruff, up to the pay scale of step three. Approve the amended policy for placing memorials on public property. And discussion on possible action on improvement, approving the operators agreement between the City of Hudson and Jarvis and Sons Incorporated.
Would you please pull A, um, the meeting minutes? The, it says, in their discussion and possible action on consent agenda items, it says approve the claims in the amount of X, 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 so.
Okay.
Move to approve minus A.
Second.
Second.
Got a motion, second to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item A, roll call.
Morrisette?
Yes.
Alms?
Yes.
DeZio?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Edken Taggett?
I think Sarah had to step out, she's heading down to City Hall, so I would assume, uh, that we'll just have to put her as absent for this portion of the vote.
Okay, and Hall?
Yes.
All right, motion's approved, uh, item A?
Move to approve with the, um, amendment to the claims.
Second.
Motion, second to approve, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Discussion on possible action on ordinance, uh, to amend section two-thirty-five dash three, sub A, sub one, sub little a parking regulations by adding a three-hour parking limit in the city-regulated parking stalls in the alleyway adjacent to the City Hall lot.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, council. Um, this item is really a cleanup ordinance for the city. Um, when we did the, the new parking system, we didn't, excuse me, take into account the, um, handful of parking stalls in the alleyway immediately adjacent on the west side of the City Hall lot. So the area between, um, the City Hall lot and, say, the entry to Visorstube. So there's five stalls along the retaining wall back there and, uh, an additional two stalls, stalls on the west side of that alleyway that were formerly regulated with meters. So what this ordinance does is adds that, those five or seven stalls. Again, we don't know, um, exactly if we do have control over the two on the west side. Um, but it adds them into our three-hour, um, parking zone, so zone seventeen, one-oh-two. Um, it would also include, uh, new signage along the wall as well as an installation of one of the spare parking meters that we have, um, in storage. Um, so that people that are down there parking would be able to pay for parking without having to either walk up A to the pay station in the City Hall lot or around the corner, um, onto Walnut or on Locust. And DPUC, uh, considered this the last meeting for the Downtown Parking Utility Commission, so, and they recommend approval.
Vote to approve?
Uh, it's an ordinance.
Move to suspend the rules?
Second.
Motion, second to suspend the rules, roll call.
Morrisette?
Yes.
Alms?
Yes.
DeZio?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Edken Taggett? I'm assuming she's still gone. And Hall?
Yes.
Motion's approved, rules suspended?
Move to approve, uh, section two-thirty-five, three A, one A, A parking regulations.
Second.
Got a motion, second to approve, any discussion?
Mike, just one quick clarification, did you say that the, these spaces were previously, um, charged for under the old system?
The two on the west side were, the ones on the east side were permit parking only or paid.
And so that this would make them all paid, am I understanding?
Yeah, this would make them all the standard three-hour, um, which is the majority of the on-street parking in the city.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
I have a tangential question about this, uh, area. We lose, there are two parking spots that, that, uh, are not available because there are, uh, dumpsters stored there. And I remember, I recall how we go through this every year for the dumpsters that are beside the fire station, and yet these never come up for review. How, how are they there on our property?
Uh, that's a good question, I think, uh, Public Works generally reviews those lease agreements. So I don't know the status of, of that specific lease, um, Jim. I can check on it and we'll talk, we'll, uh, we'll, we'll bring it back if it needs to.
Yeah, just curiosity because it seems to be different. Thank you.
Anybody else? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion's approved. Uh, discussion on possible action on a development agreement amendment between the City of Hudson and Atwood Holdings LLC, Bella Rose Development.
So the council will remember, a few months ago, uh, we approved, or the council approved a First Amendment to the development agreement, uh, which basically, um, they were in the process of, uh, constructing the improvements on Vine and Carmichael. Um, now that the majority of those improvements are complete, um, we're asking, uh, for a couple of things. Uh, the first, um, is that we're basically setting a deadline, or we are setting a deadline of May thirty-first for those Carmichael improvements north of Vine to be completed by the developer and accepted. It also includes, um, the release of the remaining building permits. In that First Amendment, we released, I believe, seven, or twenty, single-family homes, or up to twenty, twenty, single-family homes. Um, and then two of the commercial lots, so this would release the remainder of the, um, forty-three total, single-family lots and the, uh, remainder of the commercial and the two apartment, um, uh, lots out there, obviously, they all require, um, site plan approvals and development plan approvals through plan commission and council. And then the last thing this agreement does is, um, it, it changed a little bit from the original agreement in which we thought we were going to have to add an additional temporary lift station for sanitary sewer on the south end of the property. Um, as we went through, um, the design and construction process, we, we identified a solution where we were able to eliminate the old lift station that was on, that is kind of on that county property, it would be on the north side of Vine, you'll see now it's just a uh, clean and graded out area. And we were able to replace that and put a brand-new lift station, which will be temporary too, at the south end of the property, um, that will serve, um, everything north of there as well. Um, with that, the developer had some additional costs, so this is an approximately three-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-dollar lift station. Um, and with, through the development agreement, they're asking for reimbursement of approximately eighty-five thousand dollars, which would come in two tranches. Um, one, uh, one payment from their, um, building permit, uh, their building permit fee for the first apartment and the second tranche coming with the second permit, that would be, um, the second apartment building. Each of those are about forty-two thousand dollars. So effectively, what this means is we, we were able to eliminate, uh, the old temporary lift station, put in a new one at a cost, or, you know, a, a lift station valued at about three-hundred-and-twenty-five, three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, um, at a city cost of approximately eighty-five thousand dollars. Um, and again, we're not out anything, this would just be deducted and reimbursed through, uh, their building permit fees that they would pay for their sanitary connection. Any questions?
Anybody?
Yeah, uh, Mike and, I'm looking at the maps here and, and I can't, uh, see what the improvements to Carmichael are going to be. Could you just briefly address that for the folks who are listening?
So the biggest, uh, thank you, Jim, I think that's a good point to bring up. So the biggest thing there is as you're northbound on Carmichael, you'll note when you're headed, you know, when you go through and you continue to head north on Carmichael, that you have to do that weird jaunt to the, to the left, to the west a little bit. This will align that, so there's no longer that weird, you know, that weird jog that you have to perform to get across there. Um, it improves the, the turn lane, so you'll have a dedicated right turn, a, a dedicated through and a dedicated left-hand turn on there now, as opposed to having combined, I believe, straight and left, if you're heading southbound. So, you know, that'll be a huge improvement, arguably the one improvement that I wish it would have been done last, or got done last fall. I think we're all really excited to see that one go, so.
Great.
And I'll just quick add too, that there'd be a, uh, southbound left turn arrow phase two that will help safety with, with that intersection.
Okay, we have a motion?
Yeah, I would move to approve the amended, um, development agreement between the City of Hudson and Atwood Holdings.
Second.
Got a motion, second to approve, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Discussion on possible action regarding development of project plans for potential federal infrastructure fu- funding and approval of LOEs with Bolton and Mank for related topographic survey work.
All right, I'm gonna take this one, uh, Mr. Mayor. Um, so this agenda item is something that we've been discussing on Public Works Committee for the past couple of months. Um, staff, uh, due to the, uh, impending, uh, federal infrastructure bill, uh, is, has kind of been wanting to get on top of, uh, any potential funding, uh, that may become available, uh, for projects that are useful to the city. Um, and, uh, we have identified, uh, five in particular that, uh, that we feel would check the boxes for, uh, an infrastructure program that, that may become available based on guidance that, uh, we've read and also past practice with, with these type of bills. So, um, we, we want to create some of these projects to be shovel-ready, uh, quote-unquote. And what that means is that the, essentially the plan design, uh, process is done. Plans are, are ready, uh, in case, uh, you know, for, for construction. Um, and then, uh, all that really is needed at that point in time would be funding, uh, to get the, the projects completed. Um, i- in the past, uh, uh, these types of infrastructure, or, uh, infrastructure programs, uh, from the federal government has emphasized, uh, shovel-ready projects to be able to quickly take advantage of funding that becomes available. Um, also, uh, uh, these projects would need to be on our arterial streets. Uh, so I'll, you know, obviously want to go through the projects themselves, so you can kind of see that there's some of our busier streets for, for the most part. Um, they would also be projects that provide needed maintenance to city infrastructure rather than, rather than expansion. Uh, so what they're kind of calling this is a fix-it-first philosophy. Um, say that five times fast, but, uh, so essentially, yeah, not spending money to e- expand things when we've got lots of issues that we need to fix, uh, and we certainly, we certainly know that we have, uh, roads that need to be maintained, uh, in our city. And then projects that are kind of in the sweet spot of funding or, uh, of cost, uh, so it's kind of generally in the half a million to two-to-three-million-dollar range. Uh, it seems to be the desire to spread out the, spread the love, so to speak, to, uh, a number of projects all over the place. And so if you have projects that are, that are lesser in the grand scheme of things, uh, cost-wise, you know, according to what the federal government thinks is lesser, uh, probably more successful, uh, potential for, for us to actually land, uh, some of these projects. So, uh, with that in mind, uh, staff has, and the Public Works Committee have identified the following five projects. Uh, the first one being Carmichael Road from I ninety-four to Riverview Drive. Um, what that would entail would be milling, undersealing and overlaying the pavement. So a mill is taking off the top layer of pavement. Uh, overlay would be putting new pavement on top. The underseal part is something that's new to us, um, and that is essentially, after you remove the top layer of pavement, you put down with a seal coat, like we just did on, like, Hagan Street last year. Uh, and what that does is that seals up a whole bunch of the cracks that would otherwise pop through. And if you drive on Industrial Street or Stage Line, or that we milled and overlaid last year, those streets could have probably used an underseal because you can see all the cracks coming back through, uh, over time. Um, replace the pedestrian amps to be ADA compliance, uh, replacement of the trail pavement. Uh, right now, the trail, uh, along the west side of Carmichael Road is in really rough shape. Um, filling in some missing links of the trail, uh, between Albert Street and Mayor Road for one, and then along Stage Line from Carmichael to Center for another. Um, to kind of more complete our network. Uh, replace spot curbing, catch base and settlements as we always do on these type of projects, and then replace signing and pavement markings along the corridor as well. Uh, I will say before I go on, uh, eat, there is sketches of each potential project area provided in the, in the issue sheet if you need some more of a visual on, on what's going on with these projects. The second project we identified, Stage Line Road from Coachlight Drive to Darnold Drive. Um, and so what that would entail would be removal of one three-lane in each direction in the five-lane section between Coachlight and about the Foster Property, if everybody knows where that is. Um, the road is severely overbuilt for the amount of traffic that it, that it sees. And because of that, uh, there are lots of speed issues, uh, along that corridor and, uh, potential safety concerns related to that. Uh, we would look to replace the pedestrian ramps, again, for ADA compliance, um, replace- potential safety concerns related to that. Uh, we would look to replace the pedestrian ramps again for ADA compliance, um, replace the curb on the south side of the road. Uh, kind of convert the road to a three lane section instead of a five lane section, use that additional space on the south side of the street to put in a trail section through there. Uh, add pedestrian median refuge islands to help people cross the street and then mill and overlay the remaining pavement. Cooley Road is the third project, um, from second to 11th street. What that would entail is a mill and overlay from second street through 11th street. Upgrade the sidewalk on the north side to a 10 foot trail to, uh, come, come, complete a missing link in the trail section, uh, segment, uh, from up on the hill to down, to downtown. Uh, replace the few pedestrian ramps that are along that corridor and then add a pedestrian crossing for getting to Berkmost Park, which is not there right now. Uh, fourth project would be Ninth Street from St. Creed Vine. Uh, what that would entail is reclaiming the pavement. So what that means is grinding up all of the pavement and, and starting fresh with new pavement, uh, without necessarily replacing all the curb and gutter and all that kind of stuff. Uh, replace the numerous pedestrian amps along that corridor and add, uh, permanent speed calming measures, uh, that we've already discussed, uh, previously at, at council for Ninth Street. Um, Vine Street from Wisconsin to east of Diamond Drive is to kind of complete the last link of Vine Street that hasn't been touched, uh, in the last few years. Um, they would mill and overlay the pavement, replace pedestrian amps. Uh, add the pedestrian median refuge islands that we've previously considered with other grant funding, uh, opportunities and then replace the trail and pull the trail away from the curb wherever possible as well. So in order to move forward with any of these projects, uh, we need to get topographic survey, uh, work done out there for, uh, moving forward on design. Unfortunately, we don't have the in-house capabilities to do so because we don't have engineering technicians on staff. So, uh, we reached out to our consultant Bolton and Mink and they've provided the letters of engagement that are attached to this agenda item for doing that topographic survey work. Um, so, uh, staff believes that, that we should, that we should move forward with the topo survey work for these projects regardless of whether any of them come to fruition with this infrastructure, uh, bill or whatever. Because each of these projects, every done something we're gonna have to do in the nearest term future anyway. Um, whether it's through federal funding or whether it's just through our own funding, if we can get a jump start on some of these projects, that's, that's even better for us for the future. It'll allow us, you know, if this funding doesn't pan out, it'll allow us to apply for other grant funding available, uh, that may become available as well. Um, and also just allow us to undertake these projects if we have funding on the local end, uh, as well. So the approximately $50,000 is not currently budgeted, but, uh, we have some ideas where that could come from, uh, could come from the leftover funds from the second street project. Uh, the city is also anticipating to receive, uh, uh, some funds from the federal government as part of the COVID relief bill, um, that we haven't received yet, but we're anticipating, uh, to be available soon. Those funds are pretty loose, uh, uh, as to what they can be, uh, used for. And we believe that, that this would, would be allowed under that, uh, under that funding source. Uh, we could find other funding sources as well, but, uh, those are a couple of options. Uh, so staff recommends approval of all five of the letters of engagement. Uh, however, we understand that, uh, there's, there's some kind of mix and match opportunities here too. We could, uh, some other alternatives would be approving some of the LOEs, not others, uh, for projects we want to move forward with. If, if council doesn't see, you know, if there's a project that council just doesn't want to move forward with, we can not move forward with that, uh, topographic survey work. Uh, you know, deferring action, denying the LOEs, et cetera. But staff re- recommends approval of the LOEs, uh, so we can get started on this work. Any questions?
Anybody?
Dean, could you, uh, just quickly give an approximate cost on each of those projects? And we've ballparked what each of the projects was.
Right. Yes. Thank you, Jim.
The Whistler rating as well?
So for the Carmichael Road project, uh, the approximate cost, and this is total overall, the project, uh, not, not, you know, local match or whatever. The approximate cost of the Carmichael Road project is $2 million. Uh, that's, that's construction and engineering and all this stuff included. Uh, stage line road would be about, uh, one, uh, one million dollars. Uh, Cooley Road, about a million dollars. Uh, Ninth Street, about $600,000 and then Vine Street would be about $750,000.
So Dean, I don't know if you heard me. Could you add the Whistler ratings on these project roads?
Yeah, it's actually in the, uh, in one of the attachments. Sorry, it's not as clear, but, uh, I can go through those if you'd like. Uh, Carmichael Road, the, uh, the Pacer rating, which is I believe what you're referring to Randy, uh, is a five, which is in the mill and overlay category. Uh, stage line road is somewhere between a four and a six. Uh, honestly, probably closer to the four for a lot of it right now. Um, Cooley Road, uh, is at a five, uh, so in the mill and overlay category. Ninth Street, uh, in 2019 was a three. I'm thinking it's probably about a two now, if you've been on a ninth street. Uh, and then, uh, Vine Street is between a four and a five, uh, as well. So they're all in the needing work category, uh, for these projects. Yeah.
And Dean, just a question on the COVID relief from the federal government. Are we thinking, is it something like 1.3 million or do we have a sense of what the city is going to be getting?
Yeah, I can answer that. We're looking, right now the estimate's 1.39 million. Um, I know that when they did the call, they were talking about some cities thought their numbers were off. And so, um, we think there might be some adjustment as they make corrections across the country to, to the actual amounts everywhere. Uh, but we would assume it's going to be close to that number somewhere. Um, and so at this point, we've been doing, um, almost weekly calls either with the league or with the, with other, um, federal organizations about this. But we still, nobody's still gotten the clear, um, guidance yet on the, the detailed usage. We know the broad usage of it. Um, but we're, we're waiting for the detailed usage before we, um, kind of bring everything forward to the council just because it, it, it's hard right now to have a, any sort of real conversation about how to use it. Uh, when we kind of just know that, well, you can use it for infrastructure, but they only call water and sewer infrastructure. But, you know, how do you replace water and sewer without dealing with the road? You know, so we have a bunch of those sort of questions that haven't been answered yet. Um, but my guess is that we're supposed to start getting the money within about a month for our first kind of half. Um, so what we're hearing is that before that first, um, payment comes directly to us, we'll have further guidance coming out. And then with that guidance, you know, our plan was is as staff to basically just kind of bring it forward and say, here's what we got. Here's some, you know, ideas. Um, but you know, what does the, what does the council want to do and how they want to see it used?
Hmm. And here, are you confident that, that we would have? I don't know. I guess you don't know the rules from the feds, but we would have the money in that package, you think, to cover the 50,000 we're talking about?
Well, and again, we're not sure 100% of the usage allowance, although we look at this as infrastructure to see the exact definition of infrastructure would be, you know, just to make sure. We think so though. And if it's not from there, like you said, we would, we would identify. I think we actually had about six or seven sources identified in the original memo. I told Dean to get her down to two to make it a little simpler.
Okay.
Uh, but we have a number of sources that we could pull from to get to that 50 without really any too big of an issue.
That's what I'm trying to figure out. You feel confident we can get to the 50 is what I'm.
Yes, without having to impact anything negatively.
Okay. Thank you.
So I would have a question for Dean. Um, we worked on this quite extensively at public works level. Um, but I forgot to ask one thing back then. So if we take the, on the expense of the $50,000 for the topographic, um, studies, does the, is it possible that those studies will expire? Like the information that we glean from them, if not used within a matter of a certain number of years, we'd have to reinvest that money for new information?
Oh, it's a good question, Sarah. Um, generally, so a topographic survey, what it does is essentially just gives you, uh, details about how the, uh, surface is out there currently. So, uh, that, you know, essentially you're putting a, a, a rod on the ground and it's getting you what the exact elevation at that point is, you know, for the various points that you take, uh, measurements on. Um, so if you think about it, uh, really things don't change very quickly, uh, as far as, you know, things, you know, going up or down or, or, well, hopefully not left or right. But usually up or down is kind of, uh, how it changes. Um, so, you know, at a certain point in time, you know, if it's 10, 20 years from now, we probably want to redo it. But, you know, for the very foreseeable future, this would be an investment we could use for, yeah, I, you know, at least five years, I would think, uh, to, to make, get that, get that projects moving forward with it.
Well, like I said, Public Works worked, um, you know, a couple of meetings on this and I feel very confident that it's the right direction to take. So I would move to approve the letters, uh, uh, engineering provided by Bolton and Mink as presented.
Second.
Got a motion, second to approve. Any further discussion?
I guess the only thing I'd want to say is I think they're, they're great. It's great to have something shovel ready and I think it's going to help us, uh, once that federal money, if that federal money, I guess, um, gets passed and it gives us really a quick way to do that. So I want to thank Dean and, uh, Mike for some of that groundwork for getting us going on this.
Okay. Anybody else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Discussion possible, discussion possible action on the Paul Rhodey request for extension of 90 day startup time for class B beer, class B intoxicating liquor license issued to 715 LLC doing business as Omerita in June 2019.
Um, I think Kathy's memo kind of lays out the situation here. Um, you know, we have a license that's, that's basically been assigned, but has not, uh, the business has not been open. Um, you can see the information provided by, uh, Mr. Rhodey. Um, obviously this was a very unusual year, um, and I, I guess I, I don't have, um, a, any doubt that, um, it was a unique situation that delayed the opening, um, and that, um, I, I also do not doubt, um, the statement that, um, he intends to open, um, within the timeframe that, that, that he has, uh, uh, in his email. Um, but, um, it is not something where, uh, staff can just make that decision, um, to go ahead and, and kind of grant an extension. Um, so it is something that we have to, to bring forward to the council, um, for official action.
I would move to extend the license of 90 days startup just because of the pandemic. Okay.
We got a motion and a second. Discussion?
I do think it makes sense because this has been a year like no other. So I think if the city can't be flexible on this, um, we're all in trouble. So I, I think it's a good idea to extend.
You know, I just have one comment, if you don't mind. I was wondering, um, in my short stint here on city council, it seems like we, we extend these a lot. Is it possible that it would be prudent for us to look at our timeline and, and just start out with them a little bit longer than we currently allow?
We could revisit it.
You mean change the ordinance?
Well, right. I mean, it seems like every time we issue a license to someone, they have to come back and ask for an extension. So if we just
Makes sense.
m- make ours a little longer, we could save us all some time. Just a thought.
Yeah, that could be certainly on a future agenda.
Yeah, we could, we could definitely look at that. I, I guess I'm not sure what, how it fits in statutorily too, but I, I, yeah, I think that's, like you said, instead of having to bring these back, we can take a look at what the ordinance does and what our options are.
Joyce, Joyce, would you agree for August 1st, that like in the email?
What's that?
Would you agree to change, uh, my motion to say August 1st? That's when he plans to open.
Um, sure.
Okay. That's what was in his email.
You're extending the deadline to August 1st?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Anybody else? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion's approved. Uh, gets us to the end of the agenda. I know that, uh, Sarah had, uh, wanted to make some comments. I see her in the chambers now, Sarah.
I'm gonna be at the podium if that's all right.
Oh, absolutely.
So, um, boy, I, I sure wish we were all together. I wish the chambers were full. I wish we were all at the table and the galley, gallery was full of, uh, participants and on watchers. I am very hopeful that, uh, the council will be returning to that situation very soon. Fellow council members, it's been more than a pleasure to work with you. Each one of you brings so much dedication to this community and to this table. You have each my greatest respect for the relentless work you have, do, you do and continue to do for our community. I know you, you will continue to bring forth great ideas and it's my greatest hope that you continue to, uh, make effort towards creating a council that really listens to each other and cooperatively creates the path forward for Hudson. Sarah Brock, I think you're still out there. Congratulations on joining as the new rep for District Five. You are among great peers. I know you are going to be a dedicated public servant, bringing new energy to this room. Your constituents will be well represented and I'm excited to see you in action. Mayor Connor, I wish I could see you right now, but I can't. I thank you for the encouragement you have given me. That has not gone unnoticed. It's been a pleasure working with you on the one or two projects that we did, we're closely together. And I'm excited to see the physical progress, especially with the improvements coming in the park. I encourage all of Hudson's residents to fully embrace the golden rule initiative that you spearheaded. When that takes hold and becomes part of the thread of this community, Hudson will become an even greater place to live, work and visit. I also want to give out, uh, give a shout out to Mary Claire at the Hudson Chamber. Some of you recall that Mary Claripide applied for the vacancy that was created when John passed. So I guess things happen for a reason because that happened. Uh, had you been appointed, you may not have been available to step into the important leadership role you now hold at the chamber. You are such a valuable resource to the community and Hudson's lucky to have you at the helm of such an active and successful chamber. I'm so fortunate to have gotten to know you and work with you. Hudson has accomplished a lot in the three short years I have served. We have a new development, or we have many new development agreements. Major road and infrastructure work both behind us and soon ahead. New Tiff district downtown, many changes in our water utility, a new fire hall. How exciting is that? And many, many newly hired staff members. I also wish to mention the successful transfer of EMS to Lakeview and with that came a brand new ambulance base right here in Hudson. I want their leadership to know I am cheering for their continued success. These accomplishments are only a few of the very many. We are not without our challenges. Our library is at a critical juncture. It's my sincere hope that the leadership in this chamber will cooperatively seek a way to appropriately fund, appropriately fund this invaluable resource. Our roads and infrastructure also require critical creative thinking along with current appropriate level of funding. If we don't fix these now, Hudson's will, Hudson will face even greater challenges down the road. These issues need the, this council to lead with belief that there is a way to successfully navigate through and then be determined to create that way. The council table is filled with intelligent people and I'm confident in your ability to do just that. You are each passionate about Hudson's success. So despite these challenges, Hudson's future is very, very bright. As you elected officials seek to develop solutions, I encourage each of you to keep the golden rule top of mind, listening to each other with the intent to understand rather than react. Everyone brings ideas, skills and talents, talents to the council. If we don't, it is in the sharing of these that we become stronger as a team. Despite our varying perspectives, we are after all on the same team. We're on the same side, the side where Hudson continues to thrive as a community. Well, all of that said, it's my experience here that the heart of the city is in our staff and I'm so glad that there's some of them here today. This city is under such great leadership. We have such a talented, energized, motivated and intelligent team of people leading our city. Aaron, although you are on your way out, you successfully stepped into your role as administrator when we, as a city, were facing many serious i- issues and they were all peaking. Your strong leadership navigated us through some pretty muddy waters. We are better off for having you here. Your big shoes will be difficult to fill. Mike Johnson, Mike Maraz, Chief St. Martin, Chief Willem. Mike Johnson, Mike Maras, Chief St. Martin, Chief Willem, Kip, Dean, I mean, you make a superior leadership team. It's incredible. I mean, really, unsurpassed. You each have my every respect and my highest, highest regard. Hudson's fortunate to have you. Allison, Becky, and Brian, I haven't done a great deal of close work with you, but I knew, know that you bring a lot of talent to the city. You have undertaken major projects, upgrading our systems in IT, document management, and finance. Those projects were not small. They were a lot of work, and the impact going forward will mean a city that runs more effectively and efficiently in the future. I thank you for your large effort that each of you put forth. Our library is currently under the direction of interim co-directors Shelley Tongas and Madeline Page. We saw last month during Shelley's presentation that they are doing such good work and accomplishing many good things despite the overwhelming challenges our library faces. Your work at the library is not unnoticed. So three years ago, I stood in this room and accepted a plaque acknowledging my husband's seven years of service on this council. At that meeting, I encouraged others to find a role in society where they could contribute their time and talents despite the fact that they may not feel worthy or courageous enough to do it. I explained that John's experience serving in this community made him a better everything, a better business owner, a better husband, and a better person. At that time, I had absolutely no idea that my message was also to myself. I then had no plan or intent to stepped into, to step into his role, and yet, here I am, three years later, having done so. I absolutely love the work here. It saddens me to be stepping down. But as I've already explained, it's time for me to refocus my energies on my own company and my own path to a new life chapter. I sincerely thank my fellow council members for appointing me to this chair after John's passing. I also thank District 5 residents who kept me in this office for the term thereafter. Honestly, without John being my predecessor, I don't know if I would have been able to take my own advice and, and muster up the courage to serve in this capacity. But like John, the experience has made me a better person for facing my fear, walking through my own courage door, and stepping into what had been his role. I strive to do my best as I honor John's legacy and serve the District 5 residents. So now, from my house to all of Hudson, I want to thank you for allowing me, both John and me, to serve these years, the past 10 years. It's truly been a great honor. I am sincerely grateful, and I thank you.
And knowing you, I know that you're a force and presence that will be felt in our city for many, many years to come. And I continue to look, I, I look forward to continuing to work with you on issues that, that are important to us, and I know that we will be working together still. So thank you very much for your service, and your presence here has certainly been felt in the short time that you've been on the council. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rich.
All right. I don't have anything other than that our next meeting will be January 20th. I'm, I'm sorry, April 20th, and that will be, you think that's funny, Paul?
Yeah.
And that will be our reorganization meeting. So I look forward to seeing you all then, if, if not having conversations with you before. Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, I have a quick, quick, quick item to note here. So just to let you know, and for the public that might be still watching, and all the council members, the Wisconsin DOT has issued a public engagement meeting prior to the start of the Highway 35 project. It is scheduled for Monday, April 19th. It is a two-part kind of, of meeting. The first part starts at 3:45 to 4:45, and that's via phone call. And then from 5 o'clock to 6 o'clock, there is a in-person meeting down at the Lakefront Park Band Shell. And then, like I said, that'll be happening this upcoming Monday at, starting at 3:45. If you want any more information, it's posted on our website right underneath, underneath Hudson News. So for anybody, like I said, out in the public that wants to attend, all the letters went out to the residents, so they're all aware of that as well. So just wanted to let everyone know of that. Thank you.
Excellent. Thanks, Mike. Anybody else?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Yeah, motion, second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. We stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody. We'll talk with you. Thank you again, Sarah.